A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we have approval of the October 18th, regular board minutes?
I'll make the motion, we accept them as ordered.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of vouchers.
Well, our general fund is $296,013.73. Water fund is $114,609.09. Sewer fund, $33,628.84. Capital fund, $136,202.5. Uh, they've all been audited. I don't know if Joe wants to say anything about any of them or not.
Oh, just a couple of things. On a general fund, a little over 150,000 of that is our yearly payments to New York State Retirement System, so that's why that's so high. But if we pay it now, we get a discount, so that's why we're paying it early. And the water fund, uh, there's a new truck that was purchased, a new F-250, so that's 50 some thousand in that account. One, a couple of reasons why both those accounts are higher than usual. That's all I got.
Can I make a motion that we pay the ar次as audited?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Phase two, wastewater treatment plant, basically the project's done, but we've had a couple of change orders that were in the works before the project was, uh, completed, so, uh, we just need approval to sign those two change orders, and I don't know, Matt, do you have anything else?
No, I mean, some of the, these are the balancing the unpaid work with the, with the additional work, uh, that at the end of the job, that's what the NCC one is, and then Spencer was just some fire alarm work. We thought there was a conduit, that, that original design showed pulling new wires through a conduit. There was no conduit, so we had to pull the wires through the ceiling.
We knew these were coming down the pipe. We discussed these once back, uh, when we, with Spencer on the fire alarm system down there, and then the other deal is that control valve between Lagoon One and Lagoon Two that we were having problems with. That's the one we had to have a diver go down and...
Diver to put a plug in or line between the looms so we can stop the flow.
Not saying I would have wanted the diver, but...
He didn't mind that, did he?
No.
It's probably not new to him.
So if nobody has any questions on either one of those change orders, we just need a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion to be change orders.
Probably individual, Spencer and them.
I'll make a motion to approve Spencer's orders. I'll second that motion.
Do you second it, Dan?
I do.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve North Country Contractors.
Second.
Second on that one? All in favor? Anything else?
So, with that, we're working on getting some Asbells, final ONM manuals, those sorts of things, but it's just collecting. Getting the final training, just the arrows blowers, we need to calibrate those, new diffusers, and, uh, that project should be done.
That's it?
Yep.
Groundwater well development project, I think we're pretty good on that one, but anything?
Yeah, we're in a similar situation there, we're just wrapping up punchless items, minor stuff is, is really left right now. Um, the, the wells and the water lines are tested and up and running now, so, um, water is getting from the wells to the plant now. So, um, everything seems to be, seems to be operating pretty smoothly right now, so, yeah, we're just, just down to some minor, minor items in that project as well.
I know Pam's been working with, uh, Bob Smith and Jeff Smith, uh, EFC, to take that to the long-term bonding, hopefully here in December, I think. Have that completely, hopefully, closed out. Street lighting, we're still waiting on our two new lights, part of the holdup there, they told me they're going to be up here in November, but now they're waiting for approval for, I think it's Adams and Martin'sburg, contractor wants to come up and hit everybody at the same time instead of coming in the Laugel and then having to come back, so, it's kind of a waiting game at this point. But we do have all the materials here. Zoning changes.
Should be a, one single page in your package or someplace. I, I actually did some research on this, uh, on handicap ramps and a possible exemption on setbacks, so there's some wording in there and some also some definitions on driveways, which I was, uh, going to talk to Kathy about, and Cassandra at the planning department, sit, sit down with her and go over this sometime here in the wintertime when we, we shouldn't have to worry about it till spring anyway. But I actually kind of like this handicap section here because it allows a temporary one for two years, basically, that...
They'd have to get a permit, but they wouldn't have to...
They still have to get a permit, still have to get building permits, but they, as long as they can provide the minimum necessary relief and shall represent at least possible modification that's determined by the zoning inspector, so the zoning inspector's still involved. So, I'll go over with Kathy, Bill, and the planning department, and I'll continue to research it through the next...
I mean, it's, it sounds good and pretty much the way it's written.
Yeah, I do too, but I haven't spoke to anybody about it, I mean, in my research, so...
Anybody got any questions on that? Okay, craft surcharges. Water for October, $1,000. Need a motion to tone for that?
I'll make the motion.
Second it?
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on the sewer side of things, uh, craft surcharges for sewer for September is $250.
I'll make that motion.
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sewer, October, there was nothing. All right, we'll move on to restore New York ESD grant, Tug Hill Artisan Roasters. Basically, well, there's two things we need to do there. We need to do a project agreement between Tug Hill Roasters and then another agreement with ESD. And I don't, Tug Hill made the changes that you were looking for, so I think we're all set on that, unless you have any more?
No, I, I mean, obviously, this, this proposal is, is a good one in the community and good for the community. Uh, but the way the state sets it up, obviously, it, it really is a two-step process. We have the one is that grant development agreement between the state and the village, and, and that basically, that, that's a form that they always use. I, I never liked that particular form, only from the standpoint that it says, well, the village is, is supposed to make sure certain things are done. Uh, we're, we're a conduit, we're really not doing it, but that's the way it works, and we, we get the, the grant money, it runs through the village. The, the real heart and soul of it is the project agreement between the village and, and FAR, and, and that project agreement was, was fine. There were just a couple little concerns I had as far as insurance, not, not a big deal that can be taken care of. So, uh, so from my standpoint, yeah, I, I, I guess, i-if you're looking from my direction, I, I would suggest, number one, if the state has had its final hearing and approval of, of that grant development agreement, then I would support it as to form. And, and then I would, would support the village executing it. Number two, with the project agreement with the Tug Hill Artisan Roasters, yeah, with all those couple questions with insurance, which we can verify later afterward, and I support it and, and would encourage the, the village to, to adopt it.
Anybody's got any questions on that? That's what we got. Both parties here that can answer it. Nobody has it? Just need a motion to give me permission to sign the agreement with Tug Hill Artisan Roasters.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second?
I did.
Damn. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anything, either one of you want to say on that part of it?
We also need a resolution to, to move forward with the agreement with ESD pending his final...
Yes.
So we need two resolutions.
Yes.
Or I think that's what Jim wanted.
You'd have to go off a resolution for this.
No, it's just a, a, a simple motion for the, the village of Laugel to approve and enter into a proposed grant development agreement with, with ESD.
ESD, yep. And that was passed publicly last week, and tonight it's their final vote and sign off on it, so...
That, that was the, the one impediment from my perspective, though.
I'll make the motion we enter into that agreement. No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We also have to have agreement with, uh, anybody's state development.
That, that is that. Yeah, that, that is that grant development agreement, yep. So, if we think of it, it's two steps, and, and that, that grant development agreement, that's what Cassandra was just talking about, that's apparently going to have the final review and approval today, and the village would enter into that, which you could adopt the resolution that says, okay, we can coordinate with the state, and then the next step is we coordinate with, with Tug Hill Artisan Roasters, and, and they do the work, and, and we, we double check and we reimburse them with that arrangement.
The agreement between village and Tug Hill is almost like a safety mechanism for the village.
So we're all set on both of those agreements?
Yes.
But if any of you ever have any questions...
You can send what you need to send back to Genevieve.
I, I think you have everything, um, all the agreements and whatnot, but I can touch basically the morning if you need something, okay?
What's that then, Dan? 2023 tax reliving.
I'll make the motion to assess the tax reliving. I believe we each have a sign off on that.
Do you have the one you want us to sign?
Yeah. Need a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to dispose, uh, basically we got a bunch of old records, everybody should have a list. We need a motion to authorize disposal of those.
I'll make a motion we dispose of those records.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Budget amendments. Anybody got any questions on those? We need a motion to approve them. Water general funds.
I'll make a motion we approve those modifications and amendment.
Second.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Child protection policy, this is something new. The village has never had one. I checked with the town, they don't have one. Uh, basically, worked with Mike Young, and he put this together for us, because we put in, working with Mike, um, in the rec commission, we put in for two grants for the winter skating, and they're through New York State, and on one of the grants, they required a child protective policy in order for us to put in for the grant. So, Mike put this together, and we sent it back to him, and, um, they said this would be fine for the agreement that we need for the grant. And the two grants that we put in for a total a little over 15,000, and that's to help pay for the winter rec program. So, basically, we need to, uh, add this to our policies here at the village.
How I ask a question to make this maybe one step further, anybody working closely with, um, with minors, and I'm not even so sure with our rec program, um, if we should do a background check on them as part of, as part of the procedure, so I'll...
I think this is more, Dan, like, say you're the rank, say you're the rank manager, and you suspect something's going on, you're supposed to report.
That's the one side. The other side is, the people that we have administering this that are working closely with children should probably also be background checked. I know, uh, literally, we do not, if you're a volunteer, you cannot be around with the kids until we do the background check on you, through the, through the state.
I'll tell you, if you get into that, Dan, I, I would have nothing against it, but it's going to get pretty pricey, because you'd have to do finger burning and everything. Wouldn't you, Darrell?
It, it depends on how much depth you want to go. It could, yeah, but, but, I mean, we can do a local search here, or, I mean, how far do you want to take it?
I, Darrell, I'm, I'm thinking there's national programs now, like with Little League, we have it so that the leagues get 125 free, and after that, it's very minimal. I don't know if some of these have been a national program, if it can be done cheaply, because my concern is, if we have something where something bad happens and there wasn't a background check, and it was followed that person, especially if they moved in here and we didn't know, did something wrong, we're going to be, we're going to be held liable to, uh, incorrect, Mr. Grill?
Yeah, the, the, the village could have exposure, and, and of course, that's where your liability policy provides protection. So, if, if you're looking at it strictly from a financial standpoint, your insurance is designed to protect the village, but I recognize what you're focusing on is...
Preventing it.
This is preventing in the first instance, protecting the children, and so that's questionable, prices will you pay and values will you receive? So, if you're looking at something a little bit different.
Question please. Is that, is that for no fires? Dan, is that one? In Little League baseball, we, you have to do it each and every year, uh, background check, because something can happen between the, between the two years, so you've got to show some continuity. Um, and we even had a state trooper that said he wasn't going to go through it, Little League says he's not coaching, because, uh, he will go through it, even though he's a state trooper.
Well, basically, this is going to be the same people that have been running the program, but this year has been run at the backs.
Right.
Double play employees. Oh, okay, so the concern then becomes, yeah, I do that, and the, the concern then becomes also still a liability issue. And being the double play, as a not-for-profit, we could probably do background checks for relatively nothing, and they're pretty easy to do. We kick out hundreds each year, fill out a simple application, budget them based on their numbers, social security numbers, and get to report that. Put it in the folder and shred it at the end of the year. So, you know, it's just something to think about, huh? More and more problems in that realm happen every day, and especially...
If we wanted to do that, that's something your department can do.
Yeah, sure.
Well, Darrell, what do you think? What do you think?
Only talking to a couple of rags.
Only talking to a couple of rank managers.
Right, yeah, we can do that.
Well, do we, who pays the ice, we don't pay the ice?
The town does.
The town pays them. Uh, we have, we have an agreement with the town, all right, we could probably be tied in. Even though the town pays them.
Well, that, we, me, question that if the, if they're paid by the town, doesn't the town assume the liability? It should for the employees, so it's a new point for us?
Well, double play does it for, double play does our, our rec program in the summer, and my thought is, we, we contract with them, so in the event of something like that happening that would be, uh, would be detrimental, double play and us could both be held liable. And they're going to go for the deeper pockets, which is our insurance. So, it's just, it's just something we really need to...
Yeah, I mean, if you, your general liability policy, without studying it, yeah, it's going to provide protection in the event that a claim is made for that, that the village is being careless and negligent and trying to retain it somewhere.
Dan, can we get a, uh, insurance policy from double play every year for the program?
I, I, I hear you, and, and there's probably coverage for it, and the point I think you may be missing there is, if there is a claim, and they find that this person was on a, uh, a sexual abuse list, it becomes a huge issue. And even if they are, you could be sued, but if they're on a sexual abuse list, it's, it's going to even be worse. So, yes, your insurance is going to cover it to the limits of, of the liability, but, uh, that's a claim that can come back to haunt you when it's time to re-insure.
And then what, and what you're suggesting is, is putting that financial issue aside, is looking to protect the children in the first instance by making sure only responsible adults are, are exposed to them.
I wouldn't want to have to look a parent in the, in the eye after something catastrophic happened and we didn't do a background check, and we followed it, because everybody's doing it now.
But again, we're not the hiring authority. Are we?
In a sense, in a sense.
Well, I, I mean, I, I'm not looking at any contract to say, ooh, you've got what response goes at all, but I, so, what you're saying is that to the extent the village is involved with a program, and to the extent the village has the responsibility for selection of parents, if you're looking to, to expand the policy to address background checks, and things like that, that, then, yeah, that's...
I think, I think if we were to ask them, they would say that they would want to know that background checks are done by somebody, and, uh, quite honestly, I just saw their, their six pages of recommendations, and that isn't one of them. But to me, they've got two that are of high importance. To me, that, that has become an issue that has gone from nowhere to becoming of very high importance. So, we, you know, we can do whatever we want, but bottom line is protection of our children. And I've seen it happen too much in youth sports.
I know we can't, we have straight guidelines on who we can run a criminal history for, like, if they're not a village employee, I, we can't run a criminal history, you just can't, take the name and then, then criminal history comes up, it's a state law.
Darrell, how the, how the skating works, the town hires, basically, the hockey association runs every, takes care of it, but then, but for the pre-skating, the town hires, uh, two individuals to manage that, then we share the expenses between the town and the village.
And so we wouldn't be able to do a criminal history on, on our employees?
But the town does all the payroll and everything, uh, we don't do any of that.
There's, there's national firms that do these, and I think you'll find that it's, it's not that, it's, it's costly.
You can do a local search.
And you, and quite frankly, in Little League, they won't allow that, they want a national search because...
So basically, Randy, when I heard, not Randy, uh, Bob would have to ask you to do a search, right?
Uh, a local search, yes, yeah, uh, uh, state criminal history, you have, you won't be able to do it.
Yeah, so, that's kind of a...
Uh, you actually pay for it. That, a lot of times, they, they put it on the employee, and so if you're getting hired, you, you pay for it, you decide it to us.
These firms that, that we use in Little League, it's national, we do a national search because...
Ours, ours is a national criminal history.
And so, and like I said, it can be looked into, it's relatively cheap. Like I said, each of our leagues get 125 for nothing, but after that, they pay a buck and a quarter. You're not going to get that here, but I don't think you're going to find that it's going to be that expensive.
Right. Especially if they want to do a couple.
Well, well, some of our leagues do 150 because they've got 20, 20 teams, and you, you've got to do everybody, you've got to do the coaches, the managers, the ref, refreshment people in the refreshment booth, they want everybody background checked.
That's for sure.
Yep. So, anyways, it's something to think about. I think it's a good point to think about, Dan.
Good getting back...
We're not getting any further away from something like that happening, that's for sure, it's just like anything else in life.
Do we have a motion to pass the child protection policy?
As written, yes, so I'm moving.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, of course, Bob, CTEC Solar sent a letter looking to, uh, lease the land, and I believe this went before the municipal board, and they are against putting anything on village watershed property.
This is not what went to the municipal board.
No, it's not. This is number four, though. That's what they got.
One we got is number three, really.
Number three, you're on up, I don't, uh... This is something different.
I'm going to send the same one you got last night.
No, this is solar.
This is solar, the other one was a...
A satellite tower. And what we already?
Myself, I, I don't think we want to lease our land out to somebody else's solar, because going down the road, we might be farther ahead.
To do our own.
To do our own solar project down there to help offset expenses for the electric, for the sewer plant up there.
And where is that?
In this, um...
Four years ago.
Have to check the tax parcel number, or if it's a property...
I've got to believe it's exact watershed, and if we leave our opinion and the municipal board's opinion, you, you know, we don't want anybody roaming there.
Near a watershed?
Says number four, but without looking at the tax...
Well, if it's in our, near a watershed, absolutely not. We don't want anybody roaming around up there.
I'm afraid I'm in agreement with that.
You know, elsewhere, I'd still want to know exactly what they're talking about, but, well, there's other issues right now with solar, which, again, looking at the attorney, could cause us legal liability if something happened because of some of the things that are becoming into question. So, I think we need to know more, I think we need to know exactly what, where they're talking before we even say that.
Have to check this tax parcel number.
It's got to be the watershed. I mean, we don't have any other property on the route.
Okay, I make a motion that we, uh, based on the fact that it's a watershed, my motion is that, uh, no, that we, we don't allow. We will not lease land for it.
Do we really need a motion on that?
I don't think we need a motion.
I mean, we just offer, it's just correspondence and... I mean, we just offered, it's just correspondence and-
Well, here, of course, here's what I'm gonna say. By having a motion and a second and a vote, it shows where the board stands, if nothing more.
We need to know where the tax parcel number is first, where it is.
Well, it says parcel ID 21130901-01-1000. That is on here. But if memory serves you correctly, didn't we already say that we didn't want solar projects on village property?
Yep. Unless it was-
I said we put it in the mix, we sent a letter based on our- And well, that's gonna be the bottom, yeah. But then the votes five hundred of it on each four to one, whatever it is.
We can check this out till we see exact where it is. It's our watershed.
I make a motion and we send a letter to them that states that we're against anything and anywhere near our watershed. We need a second, I'll second it.
Yep. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, in our recommendations and findings, basically, it was General Luntin up here. He spent about an hour with me and he spent all day with Paul. And these were some of his findings, and most of them are minor when it comes to things that we're addressing. Some of them are, I think they think we got extra staff that they're looking for different reports.
Well, number one and number two certainly need to be done. Number two looks scary. Number one about the DPW garage, Nightmare discovered a huge loss in Camden.
There is fire alarm, there's a fire alarm system in the garage. He just couldn't see it. We have pull fire alarm things on both sides that go right up to dispatch. We also have fire sensors in the ceiling.
That we need to answer and tell them, we've got that.
He just didn't wanna climb up the stairs.
I mean, I mean, these need to be corrected because they're wrongly correct. Number two, a picture speaks a thousand words on that being it.
Yeah.
And there was one other one that I had concern with.
Well, like I say, it's pretty simple because, I mean, they just, they're looking for completed pending or not completed. So all we gotta do is just answer the question.
One that addressed to the attorney, fire protection and ambulance agreements, they said that it should be drawn up, a contract with the assistant municipal attorney having us held as a whole harmless. Page four, at the bottom of page four. Police procedures. Huh? Yeah, the next one, that's the opposite, yes. All in all, looking at this, not knowing, there was a lot of mistakes, Paul. Looks like, it looks like it was a fairly good inspection. And I don't see, I think it bodes well that even though there's six pages, that's, trust me when I tell you, that's not a lot in the insurance industry. Not a lot.
In most of them, like the vehicle left over at the garage, the inspection sticker actually came off the lift, but it's all documented in a book. My guys weren't there, so I couldn't find the book. I did know that one, they found the book, but it's on-
Beautiful. And that's how we, and that's how we answer. And that's how I would answer it. No, I think, thank you for spending a whole day with him.
And I know how you insurance guys are.
Well, I can tell you what, if we can prevent one claim, that day was well spent.
Thank you. Daryl got to spend a little time with them too.
Who did?
Not a bunch of dudes, but-
They're next on the land to do an inspection, they don't catch something that they should have caught and something bad happened, so. I get it.
So, we will address those issues and-
Yeah, it's a good report.
Village attorney, do you have anything?
Well, just one small thing. You might remember that last month, the village adopted the resolution for sole source supplier. That was with Aqualogic, with the control telemetry systems. And I was contacted shortly thereafter by the attorney through the EFC that just wanted to double check. And everything is fine, but in a nutshell, just so you know, normally with the municipality, we follow the procurement policies and then the state law, general school law 103 as far as sealed bids. And we issue an approval and a contract for the lowest responsive responsible bidder. Then sometimes we limit that, because we'll wait a minute, we're going to have standardization of parts. So we're always gonna look to try to get this particular brand from different suppliers. And then if you think sole source is even more limited, we're getting a particular brand from a particular provider. And that is possible, and the village did follow the rules. Your engineers did make an appropriate resolution for the village, so you're all set with it. But the state was curious because there are some additional requirements, but I felt that would apply, that would-
I don't have anything to do. What's the reason?
I included a monthly report on everybody. We're waiting for the auditors to finalize their report. And hopefully some general entries and that's it.
Chief of police.
Along with the monthly report, CARF four has been decommissioned. DPW guys stripped it down. So I have to get permission to declare that surplus so we can, where Paul can get it on auctions international for us.
That's CARF four?
CARF four, yeah, the sixteen, the transmission, that should be a bad transmission.
I make a motion that we allow that to go on the international auction.
Do it.
Over. Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
The new car is ordered. Sergeant Martin ordered that three weeks ago. Four to six months before we'll see that. We did have a meeting in the sheriff's office with Sheriff Kirkmanelli, that went very well. We're all on the same page again. And we have other meetings, more meetings scheduled. Everyone went to range today, the entire department, all but one, we had one that was sick. So everyone is qualified for another year. We had use of force training today, and now we're gonna start working on getting everybody recertified CPR. We're getting caught up on crime reporting, we're behind since June. We've got that program fixed for this date and we're starting to resubmit them. A lot of the grants, like the grant you gave me through ECJS, we couldn't even apply it because we weren't up to par on our crime report. But that'll be fixed in the next couple of days, probably, it won't take long, but that's all I have.
What's up with Dan?
Well, cleanup is continuing. We'll continue cleaning up, picking up leaves until we get to significant snowfall. And it's been going well. We've got our project on East State Street finally completed. The public pipe's been in for a while, waiting for the payers to come in and pay it. But that's all done now. As Joe said, we just purchased a 2023 F-250 from Caskanets. We do have that in our possession now. We will be in the near future getting rid of a 2014 F-250. It's basically our fuel truck. So probably next month, we'll put that on the surplus or ask for it to go on the surplus.
Do you want a motion tonight for you to be able to get rid of it or what?
That would be perfect. The F-250 or 350? I don't remember.
I'll make that motion.
I believe that's 2014 or 2015. It's the oldest truck that we have. It's in pretty rough shape, pretty rough look.
I'll make that motion that we allow them to hold you with that vehicle.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Today, yesterday and today, we put our Christmas lights up. We have our guys over this summer found some old Christmas lights that we have down there, the ones that go on the street poles. They spent a week or so cleaning them up, repainting them. Joe had contacted National Credit, they put some outlets in the poles because we didn't have enough outlets on the poles, so this year there'll be tons of Christmas lights. I think that's about it.
Capital Future Planet.
Still working on it.
Nothing to report.
Personnel. I do think we want a executive session to discuss personnel issues, but other than that, do you guys have anything?
To do with hiring?
Did they hire?
To do with hiring? Personnel management.
Finance, anything?
Nope.
Okay, fire department.
Yeah, so Joe Austin couldn't attend tonight. Happy to inform you that last night, Montague has approved our fire contract. They're with us for another year. I will personally tell you that they hosted our Watertown Football Officials banquet a week ago. And they did a fantastic job. That's it.
Police department, anything?
Just one thing, I'm also gonna request a executive session for wages for part-time police officers. Just express wages for part-time police officers.
Planning board, CBA?
There was no meeting last month according to the letter they sent me.
Municipal board?
There was no-
That was last night. Talked about it a little bit.
Do you wanna bring it up? So we, Joe and I had a meeting with the school on the property across the road. They gave us some preliminary drawings of what they plan on doing with the track and a football field on the inside. Everything's kinda preliminary right now. The village's big concern is drainage. We've talked to them, told them we don't want them to put any more stress on our system on woodland, woodland, woodland ab. So there's nothing confirmed on whether they're gonna do it right away, but we are, we're keeping an eye out for the village.
And I think the municipal board kinda wants to head off any problems before they become problems. So it isn't an afterthought after they start the construction, all that stuff.
But the school did say, and I believe it was March, March associates, they're gonna stay in contact with us, we're gonna have some more meetings with them before anything happens.
And they still had a bunch of permits and things they had to get before.
We can review that if you guys are concerned. Joe, we can review that if you guys are concerned with it.
I, yeah, it's nothing huge. I've looked at it, but I got a cool chart, so I really don't suppose. I'll talk to you after. That's it?
Anything move the town?
Come on.
Come on. Come on. Tell me.
Yes. County's tax levy has been reduced, or been publicized as 28.5% I believe, tax reduction. But I think people need to understand that based on where they live, that might not be necessarily true, but based on keys and total assessed values. Also, I would like to discuss, some information has been out there and going around on the homeless project. As we know, we've all seen a memo that was circulated from code enforcement to the town supervisor where the county has said, according to the town, the code enforcement officer could or would claim government immunity. We have a memo saying that that was never said to the two people involved. Well, it's in a memo. And then we have a response to a letter to the editor, who is the government really working for, where the author says that Lewis County Hall, the supportive housing project, has been unfairly politicized and tied directly to the community's frustration with county leadership. The supporting housing project is not a county project. And my question is, if it's not a county project, why would the county be suggesting that it could and would do government immunity? Further, in that letter, it said that if it wasn't put up there, it would be put in the center of the village, which I consider a veiled threat. I'm not against the project, not against the project, but I don't like the lack of communication. In a memo to the mayor, it was said, that I talked with Snowball Housing, and I did, it said that there has been much conversation and discussion with village and town supervisor leaders. And talking with the people that I think are the key players in this, I'm being told that that's not the case as far as they're concerned. And that the leaders that I'm talking about, two to three of them are here, and I don't think they're gonna dispute that. So again, all we're asking for is transparency. And typical, we don't get it. Nobody's talked to us about water and sewer. Nobody's talked to us about anything other than it's one of the proposed sites. And I've got all the documents here. I think it's only fair that I am personally, I'm not gonna ask for the board's permission, and I'm not gonna represent the village board, but I am going to respond to the letter that was written by Snowball Housing Director Jaylen Haynes. That's it.
Recreation, basically, is what I said earlier, that a couple of grants have been put in for the skating season, and we did the child protective policy, so pretty much covered that. I think, oh, I, Mickey had to leave, he texted me that he had to take his daughter someplace, so don't really have a report on that tonight.
The only thing I got, I mean, there's gonna be a meeting in January. We'll have to prove the budget then. Did you see the email today? Yeah, we'll have to prove the budget. Of course, there has to be a quorum to do that, which the last meeting, we didn't have a quorum, so. It was just pointing it out there that people need to show up in January.
Bring us down to public comment, anybody got any public comment? Okay, we need a motion to go into executive session for personnel reasons and discuss hiring, please.
Wages for the-
And wait part-time, please.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?